Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council for the city of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, October 16th at 6:00 PM. City Clerk Flampson, sorry, at 6:02 PM to be exact. City Clerk Flampson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunstford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here. If you all please stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now open oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the City Council. I do not have any speaker cards, but is there anyone here wishing to address the council on a consent item or something that is not on the agenda? Yes, sir, should you so choose, please share with us your name and your address, but you are not required to do so and limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Oh, my name is Dennis. I live up on Foothill someplace called Fair Flag Inn. It was Gary's fault. I was going to let this slide, but he put a burr under my saddle.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh!
Like last weekend, I don't know if any of you noticed, but we had this, I guess, publicity stunt put on by PG&E. And I have not seen any results in how many trees fell down and how many wires broke with this horrific wind that we had. So I don't know if there was any. I do know earlier before that, they were trimming wires with the helicopter blades and starting fires on our hillsides. So I just wondering about, well, about PG&E and what they're doing for us. You know, I think if they would spend more time, you know, taking care of their maintenance, trimming trees and things like that on their wires instead of making money for their stockholders, I think we'd all be better off. And between the fire we had last year, this little stunt, and raising taxes on the tourists coming here, it's not putting Calistoga in a very good light, in my opinion. So I think maybe we ought to think twice, you know. What are we going to have next, hurricane test where we shut the power, water and gas off for five days and see what happens?
Just in case? Tsunami, maybe.
Tsunami, that could happen.
Out here in the valley.
But anyway, yeah, right. But I think we ought to, you know, take a little more care. You know, PG&E, everybody knows how they advertise on television and how many millions of dollars that costs. Maybe they could siphon a little off to some tree trimming? Think that we need to think about that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'll be addressing PG&E in the comments I'll make in a moment. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Yes, please, come up to the podium, share with us your name and address should you so choose.
My name is Carmen MacArthur. I live at 1311 Spring Street, 7th. A disabled American Air Force veteran, and I have a couple of things. First, parking on Spring Street. I'm a little bit more awful than it already was. I wish I could park in my garage, but being a hoarder, which is protected under fair housing, I don't have a place to park, partially because my dad's mother and my mother's father both died last year, and we inherited some things. My mother is weak. I have a torn ACL, and how are we supposed to organize and move stuff around without a little bit of help? And with rent going up every year because of no rent control, it's like, I had a storage unit, but I gave it up so I could put that money towards the rent increase. So it's like if I'd still have my 5x10 over at San Juan self-storage if rent hadn't gone up. The other thing I want to say is mostly a comment. I know PG&E, my gr, all that. The one thing that I know of that not everybody might not realize is some of this can still relate to the owners of the properties. I have a friend who works for the forestry service, and she's told me about some of her escapades trying to walk the power lines in rural areas where when she crosses onto somebody's property, she's met with a shotgun. So she says, "I'm here to check the lines," and they're saying, "Get off my property." And she's like, "So then, do you want us to come back with a court order? Or do you want us to hold you liable if you don't let us inspect your lines and see if we need to trim trees on your property?" So, I mean, granted, maybe PG&E should have more authority for crossing onto people's property if it's for the safety of the community, but there's a little bit of a blur in the line of responsibility, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe you've spoken with the city manager. We have been working with the property owner where you rent, trying to encourage them to make some modifications that would allow for more parking on the property. And I'm sure you're, we're working with them. But, and you're aware that the construction project that's coming, much needed for that street, it is going to complicate things for a short period. Okay, we can take that into consideration. I know you're still in design phase of that street, and we'll see what can be accommodated.
The project is actually, they're mobilizing, I believe they started yesterday or today. They're actually starting work on the project. The project consists of new water, new sewer, new road, new parking areas in front of the park. I don't believe there's currently a parking area, there's not designed to be a crosswalk mid-block. There is a crosswalk at the end of where Cedar meets Spring Street. So there is a designated crosswalk there. If people are jaywalking, let us know. We want to encourage them, safe routes to schools, to parks, want people walking, large groups of people using the designated crosswalks. But this entire section of Spring Street, it's all going to be replaced. The other comment I just want to add, anyone listening, is Mike has done a great job working with the contractors to allow for overnight parking during the construction project. So basically, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, there's no parking on the street. After that, they can park there so long as they're gone in the morning before construction starts again.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Not seeing anyone move toward the podium. I will close oral communication, and we'll entertain a motion for adoption of this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Yes, it's regarding PG&E as well. I understand that, you know, some, at some point, the need for the power outage. But I, you know, myself and I got people prepared ahead of time for this, that it's going to happen, but I'm very concerned about our very elderly people who live in the mobile homes or even at their own home, that they don't have access to NICS or they don't have access to any emergency contacts. I think we need to be prepared because I understand this is going to keep happening frequently. Many of these elderly residents, they live, they use oxygen, they use hospital beds to, you know, to survive. They use breathing machines at night to sleep. So when the power goes off, everything is off. There are people who are in hospice, under hospice care, and they have hospital beds and the air mattresses they use, you know, once the power goes off, they go completely flat and there is no way to have them powered. So we really need, I don't know, it will be some way that we can get to know who these people are, you know, without invading their privacy. And also, my understanding is that the people who live around Calistoga, they did not get the notifications from PG&E because they send it to the owners or the account holder. So I think we need to do something about it because a lot of them, they don't, they were not prepared at all. And that's it.
Okay. Regarding the notification process, we made PG&E aware very early on, they had met with Dylan and I about their wildfire activation plan, this is going back a couple of months, and how they would notify. And we surfaced at that moment the issue of single meters going into mobile home parks where you have, you know, between the three mobile home parks, we have 500 residents who aren't meter payers or meter accounts. They were, back then, supposed to be addressing it, didn't happen, it hasn't happened to this point. They're aware of the situation again. Their only notification in the mobile home parks were our NICSs, and there has to be a better process for that. Clearly, Calistoga is not the only community that has a single meter that serves hundreds of other people. So that, there is a solution that has to be addressed there. But I'll get to some of the other comments when I do mine because we have some PG&E follow-up that's going to happen. And then regarding, anyone with medical issues at home, you, there is a process by which to identify yourself to PG&E. Right now, they have about 85 people in the Calistoga service area that are registered as in medical need, meaning they have equipment, whether it be beds or oxygen machines, life support systems, et cetera, that are power sensitive. And they physically send people to those addresses to make sure that they're doing okay in what they can provide. But I'm going to guess out of the more than 5,000 residents we have, there's probably more than 85 people that have a condition. So there needs to be some more notification from them and from us to address, but we'll get to that in a minute as well. Anything else?
No.
Councilmember Barnes?
I, just a reminder to vote. Three weeks from today is Election Day, probably one of the most important elections in the last 50 years, of local, county, state, federal. Immense issues to be addressed. Please vote. Don't skip it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, first, on an up note, the Rotary Hoedown occurred on Saturday night, and Iris Lopez donated a Mexican dinner that was, I believe, the top auction item. So, thank you very much, Iris. That was, that was very generous of you, and it's going to help with a lot of the Rotary projects around town. Needless to say, as a council member, I have received a lot of input, hardly any of it good, about the power outage. And I know Chris has been working on that down in the city of Napa at the Board of Supervisors level today, I believe. And I think, basically, it is a good idea to shut off the power when the fire hazard is very high, but I don't think it was managed well. I think the power probably could have been turned back on sooner. I understand that a certain amount of this is the liability tail wagging the dog for PG&E, but it needs to be done better in the future. I'm sure we will come up with some recommendations out of the city that we would like to see done differently. And there are other fire prevention steps that we can take that don't involve shutting down the electrical because electrical is only one of the possible causes of wildfire. Naturally, there's arson, other construction activity, and things like that, that all of those things need to be addressed. If, Dylan, if the city could reach out to Crystal Geyser. I had, I was talking to a citizen out on the sidewalk today down Lower Washington, and a tanker truck roared by. I'm not a good judge of the speed limit when you're standing on the, on the road, but it seemed like this particular truck was going pretty fast. And it was characterized to me that that's a rather routine occurrence. So if we can reach out to the water company, have them talk to the trucking outfits that go in and out of there, and remind them that there are children on that street as well as seniors and all kinds of potential hazards down there. So we can talk to them. And I also have received 12 photographs of power lines and trees that are nearby, and I will share them with the city, and perhaps we can get, if there are responsibility to trim a tree, that we can make sure that that happens. Or we make sure that we put PG&E on notice that this problem is theirs and we're aware of it, and now they're aware of it, and we expect it to be fixed as soon as possible. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunstford?
I too have a lot of comments regarding what happened with the power shut-off. I think I would rather reserve those for the meeting that we're going to have with PG&E, which I'm, I understand that's in a week or two. I think it's important that either each of us communicate through Dylan, or I don't know if we want to have a special meeting, you know, to have a kind of an open conversation. But I think, as Gary said, there's a lot of things that could have been done better while still keeping public safety, you know, first and foremost. But generally speaking, I think how that whole thing went down was, was not done very well.
Thank you. Regarding PG&E, I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning in Napa at 9:00 AM. As I was informed, that somebody from PG&E would be addressing the Board of Supervisors. They spoke during public comment. They gave an update to the Board of Supervisors, and then I followed with comments from Calistoga. The Board of Supervisors was very supportive, and what we enabled, or I should say, what we were able to get the PG&E representative to commit to in a room full of people and facing the Board of Supervisors on a television, is to have high-level PG&E executives who are the decision-makers, not the spokespeople, to attend a meeting in Cali, a community meeting in Calistoga on either the 23rd or 24th of October, which is either Tuesday or Wednesday, at 6:00 PM. Location TBD, whether it's going to be the community center or possibly over at one of the facilities at the school, which is larger. Some of the questions they need to be prepared to ask, to answer are, and I'm going to reference something called the PSPS, and what that stands for is Public Safety Power Shutdown, which is what this was called. Some of those questions, and we'll get some more in advance as well, but what are the specific criteria for making PSPS public decisions? What are the exact and forecasted conditions for our area that evening which triggered the PSPS? How does that decision process work? What agencies or organizations are involved? Once decision is made and executed, who is accountable and/or liable for the significant financial impact, especially to income-challenged residents and small businesses? What kind of better support can be offered to impacted communities in the future, i.e. charging stations for medical devices, cell phones, internet hubs for communication, et cetera? Why was there not an onsite PG&E public information officer to receive all of the direct feedback, anger, anxiety, and questions that we were forced to address, often without sufficient information from PG&E? What best practices or key learnings did you source and utilize from other agencies that have been using this process for years? For example, in San Diego County, they've been doing this for quite some time. How can you improve upon the regeneration process? That's after the event is over, bringing power back up. Why isn't downtown Calistoga on a separate grid from the high-risk areas? What will it take to make that happen? The downtown area of Calistoga is a Tier 2, not a Tier 3, registered area according to the CPUC, which is the California Public Utilities Commission, which means we are not considered high-risk. The fact that PG&E shut down the downtown to accommodate the hillsides, which we acknowledge are high-risk, begs the question, why are we not on a separate grid with a separate transmission line? And then what are your key learnings from this experience? Because we certainly will be addressing ours to them. And we've also reached out to our state representative and our assembly member for them to pressure the CPUC, which is the California, again, Public Utilities Commission, to have a representative here as well. The intention is this, for this to be a community meeting for Q&amp;A with the people that make these decisions. And the emphasis being on how is that decision made, what is the criteria, and why that was the case. We are the, while several neighborhoods across, and areas across the, across several counties were impacted and went through a PSPS, we're the only city in highly dense, highly populated or dense area where also the entire city was completely turned off. And the economic impact is significant, the psychological impact is significant, and these are all questions. We acknowledge and understand that this was the first time that PG&E, under their wildfire protection, planned and protocol enacted their PSPS. But it's not the first time this has happened in the state of California, and why aren't some of the better practices being utilized? So that's what we're pushing for. They're committed to it. I got confirmation even as late as 3 o'clock this afternoon that they were rounding up who is the, who are the most appropriate people. I did, again, indicate, we are not interested in speaking to their public information officers. We want the people that are making these decisions at a relatively high level. And that was followed up by support from the county. The county was not off the hook either. What I requested from the county is that their presence, that they be present here as well because the county certainly could have, and perhaps we should have asked for it, but they could have provided us, while they provided us great Office of Emergency Services support, passing along information, et cetera, they could have done a better job under Health and Human Services by providing staff and counselors to do welfare checks and wellness checks in some of our densely populated senior communities. As well as, we did have some people who were impacted by this because of what happened only a year ago from a PTSD standpoint. So there could have and should, should have been, and for future state, should be counselors in community for this. So we, I hope to have something confirmed by PG&E by early tomorrow so that it can be published in our local papers. I don't have an interest in making this a media circus, so this is for local media is where we prefer to leave this, so that our residents, our community, have the opportunity to address the CPUC, PG&E, and the county versus getting lost in the shuffle when all of the news vans show up. So that is the, the desired intent is to take care of our community first. And again, this could be a key learning for PG&E so that they don't do the same thing or have the same thing happen to another community at a later date. I too share the opinion with Councilmember Lopez Ortega, this will happen again. Let's make sure it happens better the next time. Right?
One, one comment on this. I think the structure of that meeting with PG&E is important. Having just an open community forum where, I mean, I'm wondering if we should have a special council meeting, PG&E and the county can have a seat at the table, and this becomes more of a, an organized, structured conversation where we're asking good questions and we're demanding answers. And of course, letting the public have the chance to also speak and ask their questions as opposed to something that's unstructured and really just a free-for-all where PG&E's going to just, you know, come up and do their dog and pony show and...
No, they're aware. I mean, there's an entire email that went with this, but the intent is providing them questions in advance to be prepared for, and we will be structured. But it's important to let the community have an opportunity to ask the questions.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So we can entertain those in advance. But the first big trigger is getting them to commit to the date and time and the year so we can address that.
I'd like to also add a little bit more to this discussion, and that is, there are perhaps things that we could have been doing as a city to have made things a little bit better for our citizens. Certainly did not have the ability to order them to turn the power back on, but, and I know that the fire department was on full alert, and, but perhaps there are other things, other departments could have been prepared for. I don't know if we had public works people on call in the city, whether we beefed up the police patrol. Because we have streetlights out, there's a possibility that somebody would take advantage of that. There's traffic issues, I'm sure, with the streetlight being out, and, traffic light, I should say, as well as the streetlights. So I think there are some things probably in there that we ought to do a shakedown within the city with the department heads, and perhaps, Dylan, you've already done that this morning at your staff meeting, but find out on department head level what they think they did right, what they could do better next time, because there will be a next time. It may not be in the very near future. It might be next year at this time, or, but at some point, the weather will be at a point where the power really does need to be shut off. And when it does, if we've learned some lessons at the city level, we want to be, be prepared with a contingency plan.
Well, one, one of the key problems I had with this whole thing was that we were not alerted of the specific time that the power was going to be cut. And if you're operating a restaurant that's full of patrons, it takes time to transition guests, you know, out of that public space, to pay their bill, wrap things up. You've got, you know, cooks in the kitchen, cooking over gas flame, you've got hot oil. It, you know, it's a dangerous environment to have all of a sudden the power just go. And somebody in PG, up, up the ranks is making the decision of now's the time we were going to cut the power. And it just seems to me that they could first make the decision, okay, this is going to happen, and it's going to happen, we're going to give you 45 minutes or 60 minutes, and it absolutely is going to be cut at that specific time. And then that message gets out to the community, so now we know, okay, this is happening, and we can transition better. It seems, to me, it just seems like a simple, a simple thing.
I would completely agree, and I think that's part of directly what we asked them. And again, this is, this is going to be a learning for them because it's the first time they've done it. But, I mean, there's a thousand things that we could throw at them and say, hey, well, how's this process work? But I would agree, if there was like, hey, this is your, your go-dark time, you can make arrangements for that. I will say, you know, to Gary's point, there, I believe you're, you are planning a debrief for city employee, of city staff to see how they do it better. But overall, as is typically the case in a situation like this, Calistogans performed beautifully. They handled it well. They managed the intersections. They managed the sidewalks. It's, it's a, we're a pretty rough-and-tumble community. It's, we're a pretty rough-and-tumble community. But with that said, it doesn't mean you should take advantage of that situation and keep subjecting us to these things. So.
One thing I'd like to say, back to Gary's point about infrastructure, et cetera. Maybe this is the time to start looking about burying all PG and, all PG&E lines inside the city limits. I know it's extremely expensive, extremely time-consuming, but if we could do that, then we could have a separate grid that would not be susceptible to this. You've got the, you've got the hillsides, you've got the school district, but maybe now's the time to start thinking about that long-range, the construction, renovations, other things that we could start doing that. I know my street has it. I think it was required when it was built back in the 80s.
Pretty much many, all mobile home parks. All have underground utilities.
So that ought to be brought into the discussion about the infrastructure and why the entire town was shut down because of the danger coming from the hillside.
We've also, as a council, let's not forget, we've also forgiven some properties from having to bury lines.
Yes, we have.
Multiple, as a matter of fact.
But they also, I believe, have a clause that when it goes underground, when there's enough people along the line to make it economically feasible, that it be buried.
Okay.
One last, one last thing that I think is very important for us is to have a plan as council members, because, you know, we had to know who's doing what, you know, and maybe, like, for example, at my work, I had to, I had a plan, emergency plan, who's doing what, who's calling the families, who's in charge of medications, who's in charge of transportation, who's in charge of the food, checking that, you know, the residency staff. So I think we had to have something like that. Community-wise, maybe, you know, get a, I don't know, maybe it will be too much, but to have a community group, you know, where it can be one council member or two council members, the police, you know. So something that, in case of an emergency, because this is not the only emergency we're going to have, we had to think ahead of time to be very prepared for emergency. It's just an idea, but maybe we can work it out.
We have plans for fire now. We have plans for evacuation now. We have plans for earthquake. Now this is a forced power outage for an extended period of time. We need one for that. All right. Thank you. City Manager Feek, I didn't forget your report tonight. Did I leave you anything to talk about?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if you don't mind, I'm just going to address a few items real quick, and I'll try and be brief. First, Gary, to your comment about Crystal Geyser and their trucks, if you have any information you'd like to provide me, by all means. If not, it's not the first time, even recently, that we've reached out to Crystal Geyser and their truck drivers, reminding them about traffic speeds. So when I reach out to them this time, it'll actually be a second, if not a third, time reminding them. And if there's further enforcement action we need to take, we will. But we've reminded them constantly that their trucks need to slow down. It seems like it's, the message isn't being received. So we'll push back and get some compliance, if not through.
You can have a police officer sit down there.
Speed bumps.
We'll write, we'll absolutely write tickets. The other question, because it's related, it's related to fires, is your photos of the trees that are trimmed. If you could just send those to me, if you've got locations, we'll absolutely try and get PG&E to do the trimming. And that leads into the comments about the incident over the weekend. As Chris mentioned, you know, we met several months ago at PG&E to talk about a couple things that PG&E was doing, including this, public safety power shutdown, but also tree trimming in the area. At the time, PG&E's proposal was to come right through Calistoga surrounding area and trim the trees 12 feet from the center of the utility pole to one side, and then 12 feet to the other side. 12-foot-wide tree trimming effort inside.
From the utility line, not the pole.
From the utility line, correct. So it was a significant amount of trimming that was going to happen in the city limits, and we pushed back significantly. Not only how that alters our streetscapes in town, but when you look at the map, this comes to this Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3. The city limits of Calistoga are actually not in a fire hazard area. We're surrounded by high-hazard areas. So it begs the question, why was our city's power shut down when all the hazards were around us? But why was the city itself shut down? Because we're not in a high-hazard area. So that's one of our direct questions we have to ask them. Why did you shut the city down when you have other cities, like perhaps St. Helena, that are not in a high-hazard area but are surrounded by one? So that's one of the leading questions that we have to ask. General overview of the fire, you know, we, we had received a couple emails midday on Sunday. Hey, we might be shutting this down. It came from the Government Affairs Specialist PG&E. We have a good relationship with him. The city was aware that this may happen, so we had begun taking precautionary measures to do that. Increased staffing at the fire station, increased staffing at the police station. Public Works and their on-call staff were all contacted, started mobilizing late in the evening when PG&E decided we're going to shut this down. They never gave us a specific timeframe. We were all guessing. So that's certainly some of the feedback that the city has. I would encourage Michael, the entire council members, if you have comments, if you want to hold your own meeting, special session to discuss amongst yourselves, or if you'd like to provide a list of comments, feedback that you have, and I can draft a letter to PG&E that we give them. We started working with, I started working today with department directors to get our own feedback, what went well, what didn't work. We are planning on this happening again. We expect to meet with PG&E ourselves and talk about some of the impacts to city operations. For example, the issue with metering. Mobile home park residents aren't being communicated this public safety power shutdown process. That's because of how they contact them. We'd like them to contact the individual park tenants. Similarly, when the power's turned back on, we've consistently urged PG&E to focus on specific facilities and operations that are incredibly important, like water treatment plants, like sewer treatment plants, like mobile home parks, like assisted living facilities. These locations where you have populations that are very vulnerable or are imperative to running your city. We were surprised when PG&E announced, hey, the Calistoga Joint Unified School District is back up and running, but our sewer plant still wasn't up and running to handle the wastewater flow. Not that there is much, but.
And the school that was closed with no students and it was brought back up.
Exactly. So it's, it's, you know, we have always urged, you know, the downtown, the commercial district, the essential services provided, get those back up and running first. So we'll continue to relay that message to PG&E. We, as always, our staff is very busy. Just a couple funny points. We charged a few phones. We allowed for some computer plugs in. We even charged a few ankle bracelets. We, staff was constantly doing monitoring and patrols around the area, checking for downed trees, power lines, interacting with staff, just making sure that, you know, every, every city employee is a first responder during an emergency. City Hall was open. We even processed a couple permits. So we'll continue to handle things the way we do. In addition, we're going to plan like this is going to happen again. Our concern is that if it wasn't just a 24-hour shutdown, approximately 24-hour shutdown, what if it was a 48-hour, 72-hour? What if this was prolonged into a different kind of event? Then we would be looking at a different kind of response. We'd be looking at food spoilage. We'd be looking at transportation issues related to seniors who have no oxygen, have no life support. It becomes a very different incident, if even extended for another 12 hours, certainly 24 hours. So that's some of the feedback we plan to give them. And if you have other feedback, we've been receiving some comments from the public. We'll continue to take that as well. And the only other two short items I have is we've been talking about sirens. One of the items that's just kind of gone under the radar, the city staff has also been looking at replacement vehicle equipment. One of our engines is 24 years old. It's been on the replacement schedule for a while before we start spending money to refurbish and try and extend the life of that. Our staff looked at a demo vehicle, which was a very impressive vehicle, at an even more impressive price point compared to everything else we've been looking at. So I expect we'll be bringing something to city council here in the near future about a piece of fire equipment forthcoming. Same with sirens. We're working on a last easement or, or piece of land purchased to locate the fifth of five sirens. So we expect to be bringing forth some additional, I'll call it, emergency and public safety-related measures to council soon. Lastly, your council meeting on November 6th is, we won't have a council meeting. We typically don't on the night of that election. So don't, as we, as everyone gets out to vote, as Councilmember Barnes has consistently urged for the last six months, I believe, as well as many others, we don't have a council meeting on that day. That's all my comments. Thank you.
If I could just suggest, in the interest of time, because of when the potential PG&E meeting is, whether it be Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, I think the best option, you guys received the initial questions that we asked them to be prepared for, I would funnel any additional questions that weren't hit upon to Dylan. You can't send them amongst all of ourselves, as you know, Brown Act. And then Dylan can consolidate those, because the, the more questions that we could provide to them in advance, the better prepared they can be and a more productive conversation we can have. And then that'll allow us more time also to open up to general public questions for the people who participate. So if everyone's okay with that. All right. So we will now move on. No proclamations, presentations, or awards. Entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless any item needs to be, is requested to be pulled.
So I'll move. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. I have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We have no public hearings. We have no general government. We will now go to adjournment. The next regularly scheduled meeting of this council will be November 20th. As the city manager has indicated, we canceled the council meeting on election night. Please vote. The rest of Napa County this year gets to be like Calistoga has been for the better part of eight years, I believe. We are now an entirely vote-by-mail county. With that said, you can, there'll still be a voter assistance center. Is it at the firehouse? No, it's at the, okay. Well, that, it'll, it'll be on the website, but you can still drop off your ballot on day of, et cetera. But the rest of the county has caught up to the very progressive Calistoga in vote-by-mail. And there's a ballot drop-off box at Cal Mart, just outside of Cal Mart as well.
Mr. Mayor, I might remind the audience here and at home, that tomorrow night is the last of three forums for all the candidates. It's at the grade school at 7:00. Please attend to your questions, your complaints, your kudos, and make sure you vote. Thank you.
And then prior to closing on that, because the city staff is not allowed to do so under California law, but electeds are allowed to do so, and you'll be reviewing your ballots, I will make a pitch right now that you need to vote yes, sorry, vote no on Measure 6, the repeal of the SB 1, and to show you why. SB 1 stays in place. This is what Calistoga will get for road repairs over the next 10 years. Okay? So let's not forfeit that. All right. With that said, we are adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone, and remember to vote by November 6th.